You ready, boss?
Go.
All to order the town of Mount Desert Planning Board meeting for January eighth, twenty twenty five, and let me first say Happy New Year.
Yay.
We did it. So here we are for another year and welcome aboard. We've got people in the room here with us as well as online. Make some introductions and we'll get right into this. So I'll start with them. Chair William Handley. We've got Vice Chair Tracy Loftus Keller. We've got Ann Dalton here. We've got Daniel Burke. We've got Gail Marshall and Alan Kimmerly. And tonight we've got two items on the agenda. And I should also note too, also joining us is our Recording Secretary Heidi Smallage. Hello Heidi, can you hear us?
Hi Heidi.
Hello Heidi. Maybe.
Nothing.
Yeah. All good?
All good.
All right. And let's go for it. So we had approval of minutes. Were there any minutes to approve? Then yes, there were. We had minutes from December eleventh.
I move approval.
Second.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we've got our minutes done. Let's keep rolling. So item three on the agenda tonight, we've got a conditional use approval application. So this is conditional use approval application. Oh, one, three, twenty twenty four, name. Let me get these names right. Joshua B. Luce and Cameron Depola. Close. All right, location is sixty-one Beach Hill Cross, Beach Hill Cross Road, Mount Desert, tax map ten, lot twelve. Zone is residential one, purpose is section three point four livestock hoofed, non-commercial. And it's for the keeping of four Nigerian dwarf goats. All right, was this one advertised and a butters notified?
So it was advertised in Mount Mountain Desert Islander on Thursday, December twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. And what we have here, you've got a
Your butters list in there?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the notification, notification went out on December twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four also.
Right.
There were six different parcels notified.
Okay. And I guess I'll first ask if there's any conflict of interest on this one?
I suppose it's possible that I may recuse myself on this as I am the next door neighbor.
There you go. So well, let's first get a motion to accept Alan's.
So moved.
All right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we, you wanna move, I move we make Daniel Burke um I'm voting member for the purposes of this storm again. Second up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, welcome aboard Daniel. Daniel's our alternate member and now voting tonight. So we've got a full voting board before us. Let's keep going. So we had a site inspection at three thirty and Anne, myself, Gail were there as well as Alan. And perhaps Anne, you could describe your observations from the site inspection today.
Very cute Nigerian dwarf, dwarf goats, very friendly. They're temporarily tied to the front of the house and they're Josh plans to move them to the back. Started to put fencing up behind the garage. They're very friendly and it's a nice visit. Enjoyed it.
Anything to add, Gail, to your, those observations?
Um. They are up in front of the, right up from the house, right on the road, actually. Um, I don't, I think they might, they may have been there for a while. I asked about that. Um, there are some stakes in the ground out near and behind an adjacent garage. Which I understand is going to be part of an enclosure, but there is no enclosure at that, at this point. As I said, they're friendly aside, I'm sure they are. I'm not sure it's relevant, but, but there it is.
All right. So I will turn it over to the applicant and why don't you give us an overview of the, the proposed for project goats?
Sure. Thank you. So we are, we have a, when we found the house about a year ago, we had a very large knotweed issue, Japanese knotweed issue on the side of the house that we have been trying to figure out ways to mitigate in a kind of environmentally friendly way. And one of the ways that we came across was the use of goats. And so that's the primary purpose for them other than the cuteness, which is also helpful. But that's the primary purpose. So that, when that starts to grow back in the spring, we'll set them on that and they'll help to keep that cut back. So it won't spread further. And we are, we have had them in, in, in front of the house temporarily. We do have the, the pen started in the back and expect to have that done in the next week or so. We're gonna be moved.
All right.
Uh, hello, this is Heidi. Can I ask a question? Can I get names of those speaking? And also can we make sure everyone who's in attendance signs in? It looks like there's only a couple, but just in case.
We, we've got a sign in sheet here on the table. So if you haven't signed in, please sign in and could you state your name, please, who just spoke for Heidi, our Recording Secretary?
Yes, sorry about that. Josh Luze.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll open it up for comments from the public. Anybody have any question about the Nigerian dwarf goats? Now's your time to ask. Alrighty. Going once. Twice. All right, I'll close public comments and we'll get on with this. So we talked about conflict of interest, took care of that. I guess we first need a vote to find the application complete.
So we're only dealing with livestock tonight. We're not dealing with any structures that relate to the livestock. Is that correct?
Right. Yes.
And is that something we can do? Do we know, do we need to be dealing with structures as well?
Well, I mean, they propose a pen and a structure. On the site plan. Associated with it, so yes. But my bad. Five by eight portable
Yes.
Goat house. Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, I moved aside the application.
A second.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Any thoughts about which form we should use?
Before we do that, I wonder if in a situation like this, we shouldn't have some discussion about what our decision-making criteria are because I've never dealt with a livestock issue. I don't see, other than defining, and this, these are categorized for zoning as livestock. And that's how I think we have to think of them for the purposes of this discussion. I don't see any criteria in the zoning ordinance for how to determine whether or not it is in the best interest of the community to allow these, these particular livestock to be in this location. And I don't know if anybody has any ideas about how we should process that issue or whether or not we think we should wait to have this discussion until we get further into it. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm sort of there are no, there don't seem to be any animal welfare sections like, like you have for chickens. There don't seem to be any requirements about noise or disturbance of the the neighborhood. We don't um, we, we, I intend to ask some questions about the possibility of an increase in size of the herd. And but that's a question that can be answered. So I just don't know how it is to think about this kind of issue.
That's a really good point and you know, the, the food to animal thing is it's a bit nebulous for sure. So we're gonna be processing this through section six A and we're gonna be looking at section six A, B and C.
My old friends.
Your old friends and under you know, here we go into gray territory. You know, section six A. My personal favorite, you know, as we, we're gonna be drilling down.
I'm gonna learn to work.
Yes. We're gonna be drilling down through some generalized review criteria in six A, like compatibility, physical size, visual impact, proximity to others, density of development and in the past, when we have had public comment and mostly it would be from a butters, there were questions about, you know, you know, everything from fencing to what are you doing with the goat poop? So those questions will also be asked by the planning board. And as we go through this and we have in the past, if there is you know, a a focused point of concern, we can condition our approval based on that. But again, it's you know, you know, each review is kind of its own custom clay pot that we're gonna be tooling here.
Right. And that raises the other question about precedent, which we always need to be mindful of as well.
Absolutely. And so, you know, I'm as chair, I am you know, and just, I mean, other than Tracy, I mean, you know, trying to keep this into the context of you know, past known board reviews of, of this application and just, you know, make sure that we're not getting off into the weeds and we are hitting you know, the, the core points of review. But I, I hear you. If you would like to bring that up with the loser.
Only recently I thought of that.
And so here we are. Reviewing, reviewing goats. So I've got the procedural lead so that, so did we get a vote on the short form?
I moved that we use the short form.
We all voted on that.
No, we haven't.
All, all those in favor of using the
Did you get a second?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Daniel got all right, Heidi, you got that? Daniel got the second?
Okay, thanks.
All right, all those in favor of using the short form?
Aye.
I opposed. Short form it is and now we do this procedural thing. We have a motion to approve the application.
So moved. Second.
Then we press the pause button and we go through the discussion and review of the application. So I have the application before me. We can all refer to the nondescriptive section three point four in the land use ordinance if we need to. And I've got the short form checklist here. You know, and just for the record too, just I think this should be known, this is an after the fact application. The goats are already there and we are reviewing it with the goats in place. So
Which is always
Yeah. All right, let's do this. So section six A, general performance standards. And under that, the first one is six A one compatible. Compatibility, excuse me. So the applicant says that the goat pen will cover approximately a thousand square feet in the area. You know, based upon the application too, and what was observed on site, what the board reported is that where the goats are right now next to the road, that is not their permanent home. They're gonna be moved back behind the garage i- into a fenced in area with a with a little five by eight portable goat house. So as to the visual impact, the applicant says that the goats and pen will be mostly concealed by vegetation in the existing garage from the view of the road. Surrounding properties will not have direct view of the pen. Proximity to other structures, the pen.
Can I ask, cause you want
Yeah.
Give me a question. However, there are times when the knotweed's gonna grow. And you're gonna have the goats elsewhere. So where on the property do you anticipate having those goats? And what's, is it gonna be like during the day they'll be there and then they'll be back in the pen? How is that gonna work?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. So the, the knotweed is mostly directly kind of behind the house. And if you're looking at it from the street to the left. So not towards the front, towards the road, they'd be behind the house. We have the ability to kind of put them in a temporary pen as we kind of let them graze and then they would go back to their the kind of that time pen, if you will. And that will just be during the growing season while we're not getting that knotweed back.
Hey.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That area. Is it as large as the pen area is gonna be? That's where he, or?
They would, any area that we were containing them to would be about that size. Yeah, we wouldn't want them, you know, much larger. It would be hard to fence and much larger than that.
Okay, so it might be a similar sized area than what we saw today, but kind of to the left.
Yeah, but, but behind the house.
All right, all right.
Behind us, where the knotweed is.
Thank you.
So again, proximity to other structures, the pen will be directly adjacent behind the permanent pen will be directly adjacent behind the garage. And density of development, let's say N A. So I'm going to say C application for compatibility. So then we're looking at six A two erosion and sedimentation control. Uh, applicant says N A, there's no groundwork associated with this. So N A, uh, six A three highway safe, safety. There's no impact on highway safety, N A. I think it's safer having them back behind the garage than saying hi to everybody driving by. Six A four, impact on town services. And it
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you again. We had a conversation about goats getting out, which could become a highway safety issue. So what do you, you have some methods for, if we, just talk us about that, please?
Yeah, so we, we have kind of learned the fencing that works best for them. And so that's what we have in place now. And we also have a camera on them with a, a kind of animal monitor, kind of that, that triggers us when if they were to go. But we haven't had that.
Good, thank you.
So impact on town services, N A. Six A five, land suitability. They say no groundwork necessary, location of pen shall not result in erosion. And I would think due to the presence of knotweed there, that might have some land suitability. So C application. Six A six, lighting outdoor. Applicant says N A.
Can I just go back to land suitability? One of the things I don't know is when you have like these four goats in a thousand square foot space, that space is gonna get pretty worn and get pretty used by, by these, by the goats and is that is provides a potential, I would think, for erosion or degradation of that portion of the land. And so I just wonder if you have any sense of, of how that issue would play out on, in the pen, in that area, in the pen area.
Yeah, there, there may be, there may be some, there's small goats, the hooves are small. So it, it does that, you know, the same thing with waste, right? They do have, produce some waste, but, but it's nothing like a larger, larger animal. So it's pretty manageable. So I think there will be some, but it's not gonna be like a cow pen where they're gonna really kind of dig into the ground and all that. There's existing grass where they're, where, where they are now. It's hard to see. Now that everything's kind of died off, but there's grass there. So that hasn't been disturbed.
Okay. Is this the first time you've had these type of goats or goats in general?
Uh, the first time I have, but not Cameron.
I had a question for Kim. So what it, so when they say they're, they're done with their current thousand square foot area they're penned in and the permanent pen moves, do they have to come back?
Come back.
Come back to the planning board?
Yeah, cause they're gonna move it.
So the, when you're moving them around to handle the knotweed, that's, just to clarify, that's temporary. They gotta go back into their permanent area. Yeah. And so yeah, and then if they're, they've exhausted their permanent area, then you gotta come back to us again. So you're right. So lighting outdoor. N A, there's no lighting associated with this. Stormwater. Application says N A. Vegetation. Application says N A.
Six Christmas trees.
Right. Used Christmas trees. Yes, dust fuels vapors, odors and gases. And I just have to ask, how is the goat poop being handled?
Yeah, so we've provided a, a plan for that as well.
Yeah.
And it's, it's pretty simple. Like I said, they're small, so they don't produce a ton. What they do produce, and it's actually more bedding, used bedding than, than the goat poop itself. And that, depending on composting that, while it's collected. And again, it's not a huge amount. So it'll, it'll compost previously in a kind of household style compost.
Got it. Six A nine, N A. So the findings of fact are presented by the applicant in the attached application. And the conclusion laws that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section six A for which the standard has been met.
So moved. Second.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Here we go. So then we go on to section six.
Bill, before you go on, can you just confirm who was the motion in second? I'm not sure.
Uh, it was Gail and Tracy.
Gail and Tracy. Okay, thank you.
All right, so now we go on to section six B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses. Following along in the application here. Right. Six B one agriculture. The applicant says applicable standard met. So short form checklist says C application. Um, six B seven excavation or filling is N A. Six B eight fences and walls. Is N A due to the type of open metal fence you guys are using?
Can I ask, go back and ask a question about six B one agriculture? Because it specifically refers, I know you've got a plan, but it specifically refers to main guidelines for manure, manure sludge disposed on land published by Humane in nineteen seventy-two. That's a very specific document that this section refers to. It doesn't so I'm not even sure that it is applicable.
There's a document out there.
Right, now there is a document out there, but does the document apply to this, to this application?
So
Can I just check time and just
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually read through the document?
Oh, you did?
Really?
Thank you.
I couldn't find anything that was specifically applicable to this use, but, but I, I thought it was helpful at least to provide the, the, the plant for the manure. I thought that might be a question. That's why I, why we checked.
Yeah, no, I see the plan and that's fine.
Yeah.
I just wasn't sure that the right box was checked.
So we've got N A applicable standard met or applicable standard not met.
And we can leave it, I don't
And on the application, we've got C notes below or on the checklist, we've got C notes below, C application and N A. So I have to tell you, we usually don't get a written manure plan in these things.
Like we read it. It doesn't apply and he's giving you something. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So I'm saying C application. So, well, you know, the most of this is, so going through my checklist, which is not sequential to the application, but it goes from six B eight to six B twelve mineral and exploration and extraction, N A. Six B fifteen sign regulations, N A. Six B seventeen, they're not planning on putting in a cell tower. So, N A. Six B eighteen animal husbandry two.
That's chickens.
That's chickens. So there are no chickens and you're not in a village commercials.
Or shoreline.
Or shoreline commercial. So that's N A. Six B twenty, you're not gonna have a food truck there too. So that's N A, six B twenty-one. Yeah. Six B twenty-one rooming house, N A. Six B twenty-two hotels and motels, N A. So the findings of fact are that the proposed use include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section six B except for six B one. And the conclusion laws that section six B is not applicable except for section six B one for which the standard has been met.
So moved. It was Gail. Tracy, second.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, well, you know. So section six C is So section six C is, all of it is N A, is you guys are not in the shoreline zone. So the findings of fact are that the proposal is entirely outside the shoreline zone, the conclusion laws that. Section sixty is not applicable.
This is Gail, some more. Tracy, uh, second.
Alright, all those in favor?
I.
I opposed. Are there any permit conditions on this one? You don't?
Um.
Kim, are there permit conditions on this?
That's you guys, I'm not on the board.
It should be limited to the existing four goats, right, or four goats? They're not appropriating, are they?
They're.
Thank you very much.
Is it within the board's jurisdiction to limit, the number or just limit the use of animal husbandry?
So mine are that. My understanding from this specific application is that we're reviewing the keeping of four Nigerian dwarf goats.
Yes.
Though, I don't know, given the.
Specificity.
Of that, I don't know if we need to have a permit condition. Everybody on the same page here, so we're not, we don't have any additional permit conditions?
Do we need to set a time by which they should be moved? Because we're permitting a pen. That's not where they are now.
Well, I think that might be an enforcement.
Is that, okay.
But.
I think that might be enforcement, you know, once we, um.
Once we, if, if we approve this pen as applied for, we don't need to specify, it's up to you. We don't need to specify by when it should be moved, it needs to be moved.
It's just gonna be, it's, it's as far as what's applied for, and that's what you're going, the permit is gonna be behind the garage. You're allowing temporary freezing during the day. Right?
Right.
And this pen, it's gonna be penned, um, in its current location in compliance with the submitted site plan. Yeah, I'm thinking so.
Okay.
They run wild across the street, I'm sure I'll get a call.
Alright, so then we all set, we're gonna circle back to the approval vote, all those in. In favor of approving the application?
Uh.
I opposed. Congratulations.
The goat pen does need a permit. To me. I mean, yeah, the portable. Okay? Thank you.
They're coughing.
What's that? We, we all signed it, yeah. It's all going in here too.
It sure does.
Right there, right there, it's there. Standing on top of our paperwork. Alright, um. We'll get you back on here soon, Alan, let me introduce the next project here, so. Alright.
I could maybe let, uh, Daniel stay there.
Well, I think, I, well, hold on a second, because we're gonna, there's a little. We card money we gotta do here, so. Alright, so let me introduce the project first, um, this is item four on the agenda tonight, this is a subdivision approval application, and this is. We're in section five point one three, plan revisions after approval, and looking at the language of five thirteen one. That talks about that, no changes, erasures, modifications or revisions shall be made in the final plot plan after approval has been given by the planning board. And it's written endorsement has recorded on the plan unless the plan is first resubmitted. And the board approves any modifications. In the event that the final plot plan is recorded without complying with this requirement, the same shall be construed null and void. And the board shall institute proceedings to have the plot plan stricken from the records of the town and the registry of deeds. Okay, got it, the, so then moving on to five thirteen two. Says that applications for revisions must, shall submit at least eight copies of any proposed, proposed revision. If the revision involves the creation of additional lots or units. Or extends the boundaries of the subdivision, a public hearing shall be required. Otherwise, the board shall determine if a public hearing is required, and tonight we have. Uh, the Island Housing Trust and the agent is head of fine engineering and design incorporated. The location is Farnham's Way, Mount Desert, tax map ten, lot forty-eight dash oh oh one. The zone is Village Residential Two, and the purpose is amendment to the Ripple Hill subdivision, removing acts, walking access to ten lots. Extend the roadway connecting Farnham's Way and Sydney's Way, meeting the street design and construction standards of section five point one for the subdivision ordinance. And then I'll, um, first ask if, well.
There's a little more on the back page.
No. Right, the double sided agenda, um, yeah. And it says on the back page, construct driveway to access lots number two and three only, reduce the number of lots from nineteen to eighteen. Okay, was this one advertised in a butter's? You have.
And it's just be the one newspaper thing.
Here's our newspaper.
Yeah. So yes, this was a Mount Desert Islander on December twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four.
We don't think the butters get notified on this. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, yes. My guess is the notification theory, so. Yes, so there was a, a notification to Butters, uh, went out December twenty-sixth, and it went out to twenty-two Carson.
So I'll ask if there's any conflict of interest on the board with this application.
I believe I have a conflict of interest, hoping as the vice president of the board, of Island Housing Trust, I'm gonna step out.
Alright.
I, I wish I could.
I move to accept the refusal.
All those in favor?
I.
So what do you say we vote Alan back?
Oh.
I can go back, if I need to go back, I did live there for a while.
I, I'm, I moved to. Make Alan a voting member of the. A voting member of the board.
Dan got the center. All those in favor?
I.
Anybody opposed? Alright, here we are. Why don't we first hear from the applicant and just kind of give us some overview of the project, and then we'll take it from there.
Uh, my name's Keith Blanchard, I'm representing the Quisgian Day today. And, um, I've been, I'm here on behalf of John Stewart, he's the surveyor that actually did the survey for this. As you said, the, um, the plan being amended had nineteen lots. Eleven lots, eleven through nineteen are fully built on or occupied. Um, and, uh, proposals, proposed changes to the subdivision are on lots one through ten. One of those lots being eliminated. Lots, now lots one through nine are addicted on plan, not lot ten.
Can you, yeah, show the board, no, it's not, no, the original this year, still. Do you have the original?
This is, this is.
Yeah, this is the original. And this is proposed, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And you can see the differences are basically from this point around here to the. The lot nine.
All of that has changed. We're changing this here.
And this is the proposed fifty-foot wide right away. Extend the Farnham's way, this is, this is changed, I, my understanding is it was a, a walkway previously.
Right.
And, um, those lots didn't, didn't sell, so they, they went about changing that.
So the dimensions of the lots changed, is that why?
Yes.
Uh, there's a lot that's gone. For now.
Yeah, you can see just in, in lot four and five, um, that's a hundred, and no, I don't think any of those have stayed the same, I think all of the. These are the amended lots, but if you look at lot, like lot eleven eighty-five. Yeah, that, that one hasn't, this one up here doesn't even have dimensions on, um, lots eleven through nineteen because they have not changed.
But, and they're, they're doing, right?
In the system, yeah.
So they're getting smaller.
No.
Oh, sorry, sorry. This is the original, that's one of those, you're going from like five thousand F to seven, eight.
Yeah. Is one of five thousand.
Yeah. But you're not creating any new lots?
Uh, reducing the total number by one.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody.
Yep.
Get it?
Yes.
Right, well, I'll. I'll open it up if there's any questions from the public. Not hearing any. Anybody's got any questions, now's the time to ask. Alright, so I'm gonna close public comment and, um. I guess the first thing we really need to determine is if this needs a public hearing.
I would believe that it does not need a public hearing.
Mm-hmm, Daniel, Daniel got the second. Um, any further discussion?
Is there an argument that this should be?
Well, based upon.
Well, if you look at five thirteen.
Yeah.
Of the ordinance, subdivision ordinance, which is actually word for word on their agenda.
Yeah.
You gotta look at. Five thirteen two is the area specifically that determines whether a public hearing is required, or are they.
Right, and I don't.
This is required additional review because it. It's either extending the boundaries of the subject, go through that section and.
No, I know, but I, I, and I, and I, and I don't think there, there isn't a reason, but I'm just asking.
No, I'm just, because, because it says otherwise, the board shall determine if a public hearing is required.
Right, right, and that's what I'm asking, does anybody think there should be one, I, I'm moving that we don't need one, but.
I would second that.
Yeah, Daniel got the second, so.
Oh, yes, Dan's got that.
Any additional discussion? Everybody understand the criteria of five thirteen, it sounds like we do. Done this before, right, all those in favor?
I.
I opposed, so it doesn't need a public hearing. So where it doesn't need a public hearing, then we're essentially looking for an approval of the amendment. And then we would just be signing the block plans to them, though. Unless there's any other discussion about this.
Well, we should just note for ourselves, it seems to me, the conversation that, when the correspondence from Brian Henkel. About the. Extension of Sydney Way, which is, I think, fifteen feet wide, not sixteen, which is the road standard, and the reasons why. Public works indicates that they think that's. Still something that should be allowed under the circumstances. Just want us to note that that's, I don't think everybody's had a chance to see those.
Yeah, you guys, we saw the.
Yeah.
Email on that.
The, the piece that he's talking about, though, is the piece between lots two and three.
Right, right. That's my, that's what I thought. And it will serve as a, as a drive for three or both of them, but it's fifteen feet instead of sixteen feet, which I think is the minimum. The right of way itself is not a fifty feet, but it's the maximum. But.
That's, well, that, again, that area is not, um, at that point, it's only like access to lots two.
Yes.
Three only.
Yes.
That's a driveway.
Yes.
And the requirement for, um, either a right of way or ownership is twenty feet wide. And the travel rate only needs to be twelve with fourteen five clear above and on the wall.
Just procedure, procedure question, but are we technically reviewing that criteria? Or are we just looking at the proposed amendment in the, relative to the specific compliance requirements of five point one three?
You're looking at it for five point ones, right?
Right, so we're not, we're not digging into like road and driveway standards.
We don't need to do that for, we don't need to do five point one, five fourteen one for the new road?
That's what you're, you're looking at section five thirteen.
Okay. Well, we're looking at five thirteen, but the, but, and I don't think there's an issue there, I don't think there's a problem, but we're looking at five thirteen and there's a new road. And their representation is that it's gonna comply with the ordinance, and the drawings seem to indicate that, but we just need to. So I think we are affirming, are we not, that that's approving this change means that we believe it complies with five fourteen.
Correct, right, okay.
But yeah, good with that?
Yeah, this is part of the.
Yeah.
But there's no request for any waiver.
Right.
I move we approve the amendment to the subdivision claim as presented.
Mm-hmm.
That's all section.
Motion for your.
Daniel got the second, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Alright, congrats, I guess we got some plans to sign.
That's the plan. You got your plan up there?
Okay.
Have this back, you can throw the town.
While you're.
One of those went, yes, I'll take that back, please.
This.
That's the original.
Yep.
Recycle pound.
Yeah. So. Kim, there's four here.
Yep, the town. Yep, the town can keep one.
Right, and I can sign it in blue, that's. We used to have to have a special pen.
Yeah, my lawyers need a.
Yeah.
Your job's already bigger than one person, you're not even gonna get a second person's job. Well, I, you kinda have to do. Oh, yeah, they got, they got someone coming, oh, they did, yeah.
My neighbors Joshua Cameron, I wonder. He's. It's amazing, the style they guys have. It's just fun. They moved walls around.
It is accessible to anyone who seeks it.
I just don't have.
Oh, you know, inside houses like. Yeah, there are no other times I have spent with the Pharaoh and Bala, probably, yeah, no way.
So there's only four, four. Correct, that we only have four?
Yeah.
So while we're waiting, we do, and I wasn't at the last meeting. Um. Um, Noel has since that time sent out a proposed schedule for considering Luso. Proposed amendments, and it would include. Discussing um. On the twenty-second, we have a meeting on the twenty-first, and then on the twentieth, there will be rediscussing some proposed amendments, I think it's gonna be a pretty small, small floor this year, stuff that needs to be done. And that sort of thing, um. There's sort of the solar ordinance. And then. The next night, hopefully we can spend a little bit of time on the agenda here, going through all of that. Um, we have to have public hearings, and he's proposing we do that on February twelfth. And then there'd be a backup if we need it on the twenty-sixth. And that's it. So.
All right. Is there any other, other? All right, motion to adjourn?
No.
Uh, no.
Hang on. Kinda right down.
Yeah, they're also, all right. Yeah. So you guys need more copies?
Yeah, we need one.
Business management?
That's all you need is one.
This one, yep. Thank you. So your next meeting, we didn't get any applications. Oh. So I put the update on the land advisory video on our agenda home, that's the only thing I have. Wanna meet, pray, if you don't, I need to know.
Yeah, um. And then when's our first? Meeting in?
February, I think it's the.
Twelve, so then we were gonna do the public hearing then, so it would behoove us to have a discussion about. This before the public hearing. Um. So I'm not sure how we avoid having.
Oh, what?
I don't have any objections to the meeting on three. Only second.
Try to be organized and really.
I will be out of town. So we got one, two, three, four, we still have them.
Yeah.
And I may be here.
Ready?
Okay. Thank you, so I've got your agenda here, but the twenty-second, which is what I just stated.
Yeah.
I just need to know, because I have to do a notice in the newspaper two times, we have a public hearing, and I need to put the first one in. Um. Fourteen days. For the meeting. So. If Noel is, if you're anticipating a. Public hearing on Luso articles on the twelfth. I need to get a notice in the newspaper by, can you tell me, Gail, what I need to get it in by, fourteen days from the twelfth?
Um, so that would be. I remember February twelfth, that would be the. Oh, well, the twenty, the twenty-nine, or it's fourteen calendar days.
Fourteen, just fourteen days, yeah, not workdays, just fourteen days.
Well, with twenty-nine to the thirtieth.
What's that, what?
If it's the twelfth, if the hearing's on the twelfth.
Yeah.
And you back up to the first, and then you got two more you gotta add on. So that takes it back to the twenty-ninth to the thirtieth of February, so January.
Yeah, but I gotta get a newspaper, a notice in the newspaper on that Thursday before.
So that would be the third, thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
Okay.
My birthday.
So that's fourteen days, and then after that, I get to put it in seven days before, so.
And we're gonna be discussing it on the twenty-second.
And then also the twenty-sixth. Is that the right date?
For what?
Or in case we need to, if there's any changes on the.
Oh, oh, um. Uh, yeah.
So I need to know fourteen days from the twenty-sixth of February.
So that would be the.
That thirtieth day.
Oh, twelve, well, that's the, that's the, that's the meeting of the twelfth.
Yeah.
But you can't, it happens before then, because. You can't wait until we have that meeting.
Right.
Should be in the paper that day. Um. We, I, I should talk to Noel about what we've got. And figure out a better schedule for that. For you, that, I mean, find out what. I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen the drafts yet.
And it makes it hard with notification.
Right.
Because if we get changes on the twelfth. I mean, I, I, in the past, I think I've just done it, assuming we're gonna meet, have another meeting on it.
Yeah.
I've always just assumed, which is not good, but. I've always just put it in the paper anyways, for that second meeting in February in case CYA.
Yeah, we probably, that's probably what we're gonna have to do, and then.
And if we don't, if we don't have a continuation, we'll just cancel or something.
Yes. And I will, I'm gonna, I'll get in touch with Noel and find out where we are with drafts and these sorts of things.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice to have, have it ahead of time, so we all can look at it.
Right. Because I don't want, I mean, we've had situations in the past when the like. Members of the planning board at the public hearing.
Right.
Kind of raise objections to things that the planning board is proposing. The public consider for warrant articles, and it would be better if we had that discussion, that's why it's good to rest a meeting on the twenty-second. And work through our concerns.
But then hopefully Noel can get some to us.
Yes, I'll, 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 I'll.
We also are starting to meet with the warrant committee.
Yes.
Twelve, I think it was, was it twelve, no, what day was?
The warrant committee is gonna meet on the eleventh, we're on the, we're on the, the select board on the tenth.
Yeah.
The warrant committee on the eleventh. The planning board on the twelfth. Um. And um. Right. My answer, plan stuff is starting, is working now too.
Yeah, but you won't probably get enough.
That won't bring anything out of that.
Okay. Now we can adjourn if somebody wants.
Make the motion to adjourn. Second, says Gail.
Right. All those in favor?
I.
I, I opposed. We did it.
Hey, Heidi. Thank you, Heidi.
Good night, guys.